I pray that they do the right thing for this community and for the people. Lord, thank you so much for them. Lord, we love you and we thank you for the life that we have and the ability we have to serve you. I pray that you strengthen us and help us. We love you. I'm asking your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see it? Okay, I'll give you a minute to look over your minutes of last regular meeting. That was December the 6th and the meeting on December the 9th. And I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor by signifying an aye. The ayes have it. Okay, on your agenda, on your consent agenda from the workshop, items two, three, four, five, and six. Do I hear a motion? That we approve it?
I make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second. All in favor by signifying an aye. The ayes have it. All right, item number seven, discussion on changing Paul Christian from interim county administrator to county manager. Do you have any discussion?
I don't miss Chairman, other than I think we're supposed to have done this during the work session, and I believe it was taken off of our agenda.
That's probably my fault, because it was took off and I forgot it. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor by signifying an aye. The ayes have it. All right, item number eight is Mr. Cupp, public defender discussion on the Weycross Judicial Circuit Defender's Office regarding the budget and 2012 indent defense agreement. The personnel expense are $51,095.36. The operating expense are $11,651.85, for a total of $62,747.21. Thank you, Mr. Cupp.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, that's an increase from last year for y'all. I want to clarify one thing just right here at the outset. Our budget has not changed, other than to go down since 2008. Our personnel budget has gone down about $7,000 since 2008, and our operating expense has gone down about $4,000. The operating expense has been exactly the same since 2009 as it is in this budget, and the personnel expense has basically been the same. It's gone down $2,000 in the last year. The reason that y'all are looking at an increase is because of the way that we do this as a group in the circuit. Y'all, originally when we set this up, the law provides that we bill or that the county share our operating expense based on population. So we've got a new census that's come out. Y'all have increased about a half a percent in population relative to the other counties. That's bumped you up a little bit in the operating expenses. Bumped you up from 11, 220 to 11,651. The bulk, however, is in the personnel. Y'all have jumped about 2% because the caseload in this county relative to the caseload in the other counties has gone up 2% last year. We, and when we started, we looked at and took the suggestion of some counties, including this one, that we base our personnel expenses on caseload rather than population, so that a county with a higher population and a lower caseload would get a break. This year, relative to the other counties, your caseload has gone up about 2%, which has sent your cost up almost $10,000. So even though our budget and what we're using to run the office has actually gone down a little bit again this year, your cost has gone up. Now, the good news here is that we have about $7,000 money that we owe you that we've not spent last year that y'all will get and can, of course, use that. That will help offset the increase that we've had to pass along to y'all this year. There was an increase in personnel that we saw in our budget that would have amounted to about 40-something, close to $50,000. We have eliminated a position that we very badly needed in order to keep our costs and our budget to account for the healthcare costs that the state charges us or puts on all the employees to keep that from being passed on to the counties. I think that will work. We're going to try to make that work at least one year, so we haven't included, we haven't passed on any of the healthcare costs that the state has saddled us with personnel-wise this year to y'all. We've simply eliminated a position. We had been without that position being filled for a little while last year, which is where some of the money that we're going to return to you came from. So we're doing everything we can to keep it down, to keep it stable. I don't know what more we can do to keep it stable. We are trying to do the best we can to keep from passing on any state healthcare costs in the personnel category, and we're just kind of trying to take it one year at a time as I'm sure y'all are with y'all's budget. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask y'all to approve the budget and the contract.
Any questions?
You might look at on page 23 in your agenda and you'll see what other counties are. I guess that's correct. You'll see kind of where we fill in the vacant and Brantley and Charlton, just for information there if you want to see that.
If percentages, do you go by the people or by the caseloads?
For personnel, we go by the caseload. And of course, when you see an increase, it may well be that other counties for some reason have gone down. Because we're not a very big area, a small change in anybody's caseload can have a very large effect on everybody. So when I say that your caseload has gone up 2% or 2.5%, that's relative to everybody else. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's more crime here or more cases here. It could also mean that we're just representing more people here this last year than we were the year before for unknown reasons. It could well be that some other counties, for some unknown reason, have dropped a little bit and it's made y'all's go up just by the numbers. It moves around. Y'all have been up and down about 2% or 3% since 2005, which is the first time we started taking, keeping the numbers. So it's just one of those fluctuations, I would anticipate. It may go down next year. It may be a function of population. I don't know. It's impossible for me to tell what it really is, other than just the raw numbers compared to everybody else's. Y'all just happened to be up this year unfortunately.
Almost had a bad caseload in Brantley.
I'm sorry. I have to go talk to the Brantley people too. I'll just let the numbers speak for themselves.
Do I hear a motion that we approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Have a second. All in favor by signifying an aye. The ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, item number nine. It's Dale Brown, Community Development Director, discussion on the proposal to raise the building permits evaluation and permit fees.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. December 20th, in our work session, we discussed in length about the proposal of the fees. Board at the time at that meeting asked for me to put together some additional information. Hopefully, y'all got that in your agenda packets. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any more discussion on it. I'll render it for you or the commission if y'all have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, I think this time, I don't believe it's a good time to raise those permit fees. Number one is, we don't need to discourage people from building right now. If they're going to build, it would help anything, I mean, more than anything in our local economy, and also bring in more taxes, more houses we build. I don't think we need to do anything to discourage that.
Any more questions? I think we need to table it till a later date. I'm thinking something needs changing, but we haven't got that far.
What about if we just kind of table it up and then maybe readdress it in 90 days or something? Kind of see.
Put that motion.
And if there's, if there's any that you see that you would like for me to do, as Commissioner Bennett says, a different proposal, I'll be glad to, whatever the desire the commission is.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that everybody go ahead and consider it, look over some more, and let's maybe bring it back to the main agenda.
Have a second.
Give us about 90, 120 days to kind of look it and check it and see what happens, and I'd make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor by signifying an aye. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
All right, item number 10. I think we need to bring up item number eight and let the school board speak first. Item number eight. Already done eight, both.
Eight and eight.
Eight and eight.
Ten and eight.
Okay.
As Superintendent of Pierce County Schools and the representative of the Board of Education, I have asked Mr. Levance Gay, who is Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, to make the presentation on behalf of the Board of Education. I personally would like to say to the Board of Commissioners, thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our concerns. I want you all to know that we were taken by surprise. None of us were involved in the discussions, and I do appreciate so much you not making a decision until you heard from us. We are responsible for 3, 3,700 students. They come first, and we are very concerned. And at this time, I would like for Mr. Gay to make a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on behalf of Pierce County, I would also like to say thank you for bringing the proposed senior exemption into the light for public discussion. I would also like to thank you for bringing the school district in to discuss the proposal since it would directly affect our budget and the services that we provide to our children. As Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations of Pierce County School, I am very concerned about the proposed senior exemption that, according to the Blackshear Times, was developed during an invitation-only meeting recently held at the Blackshear City Hall. Bill Rosier from the Tax Assessor's Office has said the proposal would cut $1 million from the school's revenue. In short, I believe the proposed exemption would have a devastating effect on the services that we provide to our students, on our employees, and on our community. Our board and staff are committed to providing Pierce County with an excellent, the students of Pierce County with an excellent education. We believe an excellent education is critical to our students, our community, and our country. We also believe our community, you, and other local leaders expect no less. Our students are top performers, and I believe their success is in large part the result of the services provided by our staff. Our success is recognized at local, regional, state, and even national levels. These statements can be backed up with data, awards, and recognitions to our students, our schools, and our staff. As a governmental body, you know that the services that are provided are governed by your budget. Most of our revenue comes from the state. Over the past few years, state funding has dropped dramatically. You've seen that in the papers. Federal dollars have also been cut. Less money means fewer services to our children. Our board has compensated for the reduced funding by making cuts in our programs. They have tried to make the cuts in ways that reduce expenses while trying to maintain the integrity of the programs we provide. However, more recent data has shown that the cuts may be having a negative effect on the success of our students. Not one member of our board felt good about raising taxes. It was a very difficult decision. However, they are committed to providing a quality education for the children of Pierce County and are responsible for ensuring the school district's financial stability. We believe the tax increase approved this fall was the only way we could maintain a quality education for our children and remain financially sound. In front of you, there are some folders, and in those folders are, is some information we would like to share with you. It's called Pierce County School District Financial Crisis Fact Sheet. On behalf of our students, our staff, and our Board of Education, I'd like to share this information with you. First, for the last two years, we've been meeting with our community to share what we're going through financially, and I think it's important that that backdrop is set here as well. Our school district is important to Pierce County. Pierce County is known across the state as a place that has an excellent educational program. Our school district's success draws people to Pierce County. In the last several years, over 520 students and their families have moved to Pierce County. These new citizens bring with them their incomes, which benefit our local businesses and the community as a whole. Our school district is the largest employer in Pierce County with 453 employees. Nearly 90% of our budget is personnel. Education is labor-intensive. Though only about 25% of the revenue used to educate our children comes from local sources, all of our employees participate in the local economy. Now, a little more about the funding crisis that we've been struggling with. The revenue of the board comes from three sources: state funding, about 65%, local funding, about 25%, and federal funding, about 11%. One of the things that we struggle with is the value of the land in Pierce County as compared to other districts. Pierce County is ranked 152nd out of 180 school districts. This means the revenue we receive for each mill of tax is much lower than most school districts. This is in large part why many districts can operate at a lower millage rate. Since 2002, state funding for public education to Pierce County has been cut by $10.5 million. The majority of these cuts have been made in the last two years, totaling over $5 million. In FY12, the state cut funding by $2.76 million, almost $3 million, which was 15% of the total state funding and 10% of our overall budget. It would require a 7-mill increase in local property tax to replace the funding that was lost in FY12. However, the board decided that by making additional cuts in the FY13 budget, we would be able to balance the budget with a 2-mill increase. The state has advised us to prepare for additional cuts. The state has also advised us expenses for employee benefits will be increasing. You've recently dealt with that. The 2-mill tax increase approved this fall generated less than $800,000 of additional revenue for the school district. The Tax Assessor's Office estimates that if the proposed exemption became law, the school district's budget would be cut $1 million. It would be worse than before the tax increase. Again, this would be devastating to our school district. The board will have to make up the additional cuts, consider a reduction in force, and also consider raising taxes again. It would require an estimated 2.3-mill increase to maintain the current budget if the exemption became law. During FY10 and FY11, the Pierce County Board of Education helped balance the budget by using federal stimulus funds and reserve funds. The federal stimulus funds are gone. The fund balance could not sustain our budget without the 2-mill increase. So what kinds of actions has the board taken to try to balance the budget? In FY10, FY11, and FY12, the Pierce County Board of Education has cut employee workdays by a total of 18 days, 6 days per year. The local supplement paid to employees was also cut by 50% each year. Some of our families are single moms; others have both parents employed by the school system. In both these cases, the cuts are a tremendous hardship on these families. Even with the additional 2 mills of tax, and if we receive no more cuts, we do not believe we could consider restoring the lost days of pay or the local supplement in the FY13 budget. Our employees have continued to provide an excellent education for our children while bearing most of the impact of the cuts. In FY10, 11, and 12, the Pierce County Board of Education has cut the instructional supply funds by 50%. Though this has saved approximately $300,000, these are the materials teachers and students use for teaching and learning in the classrooms. Currently, we can't see increasing these funds in FY13, even with the 2-mill increase. Through waivers from the state, we are operating with up to six more students in every classroom. Having more students in each class allows us to operate with fewer teachers. However, research shows that lower student-to-teacher ratios improve student academic performance. It also reduces discipline. Larger classrooms and fuller buses are a challenge. We have served, excuse me, we have saved nearly $300,000 by not adopting new textbooks for several years. We have cut approximately $60,000 for our professional development budget each year for the last several years. Though this has saved money, teacher training is critical to ensure our teachers are properly equipped to help our students be successful in a rapidly changing world. We have cut our maintenance and operations budget to the point that we are only doing enough maintenance and repairs to protect the investment that the taxpayers have in our facilities. Our schools really need considerable painting and flooring upgrades to maintain their appearance, but we simply don't have the money to do that. We are also using energy management and SLOPS funds to make our facilities more energy efficient. We have worked to minimize field trips and staff travel expenses. We are trying to cover classes as much as possible when teachers are out without hiring substitute teachers. So in closing, Pierce County is known for working together as a community to support its schools. We believe the proposed tax exemption would be a dividing force in our community. Those not eligible for the exemption would probably see their taxes at a higher rate. However, the millage increase and the subsequent tax exemption proposal are really symptoms of the real problem. The real problem is that state funds have been cut too deeply for us to provide a quality education for our children without additional local revenue. As we have said at several meetings over the past two years, we, as a community, have got to contact our legislators and get state funding for public education restored. If we can work together to get the appropriate funding for public education, we will not need the additional 2 mills of tax, and those seniors might not feel the need for an additional exemption. Let me also say this: we believe in transparency in government. For the past two years, we have been sharing with the public about our financial crisis that's facing public education. This information has been shared in board meetings, special meetings the public has been invited to attend, and of course, our budget meetings. As we received new news of the additional cuts in the FY12 budget, our board held three public meetings to discuss the 2-mill increase in property taxes. A total of five people attended these three meetings. Even with only five people expressing concern over the tax increase, it was a difficult decision for the Board of Education, but we believe it was the right one. Now, as Assistant Superintendent of Finance for Pierce County Schools and on behalf of the Board of Education, our students, our employees, and our community as a whole, I am asking the Pierce County Board of Commissioners to reject the proposed tax exemption proposal. We believe its passage would have a devastating effect on our students, our staff, and our community. We also believe that having this governing body put the proposal on a ballot would be seen as an endorsement of the exemption, and for this reason, we also believe it would send the wrong message regarding your support of our school system. What I try to do is help you see in a brief moment what we've struggled through for the last two years and why we believe the exemption would be bad business not only for our schools but for our community. Again, I want to thank you for your transparency, for your consideration, and ask if there's anything else that I can provide for you tonight.
Motion.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Number one is not $1 million. I don't know where the newspaper got it from, but that's not correct. It's a little over $500,000.
That's not what Bill told us in the meeting.
It's at Minute Mark 39 in the table.
Bill's standing there.
Come on, Bill.
Yeah, the rest of it was $562,000.
We're all subject to making mistakes. That's $562,000.
We just want information, we're still.
Mr. Chairman? And we was not going to do with this after this. We was fixing the meeting to next school board to discuss this. Y'all need to sit every day and watch these poor old people come in and pay their taxes. You've only got 887 people that would apply for this. 887 people would apply for this. It's going to hurt us. It's going to hurt y'all. But these people's got to live. But these people's got to live. This is all I'm saying. I just, I see these people every day coming into this building to pay their tax on them in wheelchairs, crutches, walking sticks, bent over, doubled, but they're coming in paying them. I don't know what we can do, but we got to do something. That's all I can tell you, we got to do something. Those are poor old people.
Well, it needs to start in Atlanta. That's where it needs to start at, because that's where it started nine years ago whenever Governor Dewey was elected and started slashing the education budget continually, year after year, every year more. Even whenever state revenues rose, he continued to slash the educational Georgia kids. The current governor, I sat on the advisory committee through the current governor, it's no different, it's still the same thing. We're getting cut every year. It's our charge to educate these thirty-seven hundred kids. It's our law that says we have to give them an adequate education. So it's our job that we get elected as Board of Education members to do that. We have to use every means we can to offset the federal cuts, the state cuts. I'm not sure about Levance's figure, but my figure whenever I went and met with the governor was fifty percent is only coming from the state, and over forty percent now is coming from local revenues. That's a major shift in the last eight years. So it's almost like, and I told Chad never that, he went to Atlanta the first time, it's almost like we have a contingency in Atlanta that is anti-public education because it's constantly beaten, brow-beaten, public education. I spent last night, or two nights ago, my fiftieth night away from home this year. Of that, only four was paid for by the Education Board of Education. I paid for the rest of them. That's going to Atlanta. I'm trying to do what I can for our county and for our kids, but something at the state level has got to help us out. You tell me how many companies can take a ten million dollar hit off of the twenty-eight million dollar budget in ten years and still produce the quality kids that we're putting out today? And they're getting better and better. It's gonna start hurting our kids if we don't keep our revenue to where we can at least give them adequate education. My parents are over sixty-five, both of them. People over sixty-five paid taxes whenever I was in school, and people over sixty-five, I feel, should pay taxes whatever other people's in school, just so as you get your kids out, somebody paid them while yours were in there. I know it's tough times, I see that, but that's our charge is to educate these kids the best we can, and we have to do whatever we can. If the sixty-five and over are not gonna pay taxes, then we'll have to take steps in order to do whatever we've gotta do to get the money, because that's what we have to do by law.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say one statement. I know the senior, I know the sixty-five and older, and I know what they're going through too, but I deal with single mothers who have children that are struggling paying their taxes too. And we do, we will put the burden on them also and double it, and on our teachers who are single parents who we have taken eighteen days of pay and their supplement for them. And then if we put the burden on them, then we're gonna increase the taxes they have to pay. We understand that, but this is just not the answer for us.
I think Levance made a good point and showed what the Board of Education has done to try and cut. It's not like we're living on fat cash. We're down to bare bones, and we're just struggling. We're doing everything we can to keep our head above water, like every other, I guess, public agency is the state. We're no different. The only difference is we have thirty-seven hundred kids that are directly, we're directly responsible for, and that's my main goal, is to get them a good education the best we can.
And now I'll also say, up until this fall, our solution has been to cut, and we have cut, and we have cut, and we have cut. But there is a tipping point that at some point you do enough cuts that the integrity of your educational program doesn't just diminish a little bit, it collapses. If the morale of your teachers, you know, they have borne the cost of these state cuts. The state funding is the issue, but they have borne that cost. And if we get to a point where we, they don't have enough supplies to properly outfit a classroom, they don't have, the teachers are losing salaries, we basically can't run the schools properly, then there will be a point where there's not a small decrease in what our students are doing, which we're already seeing in our schools. There will be a tremendous one, and that's what we, we are doing everything we can do to prevent from happening. Again, I will tell you as the person talking to our Board about needing to increase the mileage rate, they did not want to do it. They, they, it was a very hard thing for them to do, but they're charged to look at the investment in education, the investment in our children, which is our future, and to keep our school system financially stable. They really saw no other option. We're very limited in what we can do.
I think most of our problem lies in Washington. Those people can't get along with themselves. How can they help us? They don't even get along up there themselves.
Our biggest challenge as far as school districts right now is state funding. That's what has just absolutely been decimated. I mean, you figure out of a twenty-eight million dollar budget, three million dollars is just going away. That's tremendous. And that's, that is what we are up against, and that's what we struggle against.
Let me thank y'all. I've got a question I'd like to ask. I've just heard this, and it's my understanding, and maybe it is true that we have some students in the county school system that do not have property, do not even live here, they come from other neighboring counties?
Mr. Sally, I will address that. When that has been reported to me, we have investigated where they live. We, they, we have a protocol. They have given us the legal address. We're not, we have investigated, we have been in it, but we earn FTE money for these kids. We do earn money, but any time that it's turned in to me, we go and check and investigate them. The principals, they all do the same, but we have a protocol system for them. Lots of school systems are having open tuition, I mean, they're having unpaid tuition, and we couldn't charge them more than what we would earn in FTE. But, but, and my watch, and the ones that have been brought to my attention, then we have addressed those with the principals, we've addressed them and looked at where they live. If there's somebody we missed, then certainly that's something that we need to be aware of, but that is exactly how we have handled it. Because the Board has been, it's been approached by different people in the community, and they have called me about it, and we have been on it immediately.
I've directly went to two different houses. I was told kids were being dropped off at, and it was reported.
And we took care of it.
By the proper protocol.
Well, I've just heard people say that they knew of at least around seventy students that from other...
That's not true.
I don't know if it's true or not, so that's why I asked.
That's not true.
Just tell them we have a board office down there, all they gotta do is tell us where it's happening at, and I assure you, it will be investigated, and everyone that's come to us has been investigated. I hear the same thing you hear, and I tell them, you showed me where the house which is what. I had a gentleman come to my house, pick me up, I got in his truck, and we rode to two different houses.
And I, and he called me, and immediately I called those people in, and I questioned them about it, and he was right, that they had had a trailer and they were not staying there, and I said, you have two choices. You're either gonna have to leave, or you're gonna have to move there, and they have moved.
But the, the good side of this is people don't want to come to your school if it's no good.
Sure.
There's a reason they're wanting to come here.
Well, I know we have a good school system, and I'm real pleased with it. I just had to ask that question.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
But again, we do have a problem with our older people, and I want some way to work it out. Any more questions?
Thank you, Officer Kim.
Okay, item number ten, discussion on the proposed to introduce a local referendum to change the exemption level in Georgia's code section forty-eight, five fifty-two, from ten thousand to forty thousand dollars. Do you hear a motion? I'm making a motion to reject it. Have a second. All in favor by signifying aye?
Aye.
Y'all vote.
I didn't know we were gonna vote just yet, but I see discussion. If we're gonna vote tonight, yeah, I'm gonna put it to reject it too. Because I don't... Look, facts, facts are not on this table.
And not only that...
They said the assessor told me the night's gonna be two point sixty-one mills. That's a million dollars. Now I get told tonight, five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Which one is it?
That's right.
Which one is it? There's a huge difference. I wanna know more about who qualifies, who don't qualify.
That's right.
Who can I ask that question to? I'm ready to ask.
Do you want to take your motion back and table it?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
I'll take it back.
I didn't make the motion, but I thought it was discussion too, but I would like to I think the seniors needs help. I mean, there's a lot of people needs help now. But it needs to be a little, little fair, more, a more fair across the board. I mean, you got, you got widows out there that's fifty years old or fifty-five years old, and we gonna shift all that blame on them? I mean, it's just not, it's just not fair.
We gotta figure out a fair way.
That's right. I believe it needs to be talked about. I don't...
Do I hear a motion to table it?
Well, I make a motion to table it then, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor by signifying aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. All right, item number eleven.
Just gonna get my question answered. I mean, are we gonna, we through that, or are we gonna discuss it some more tonight or later time?
We need to discuss it in the next work session. Next work session. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, basically if you need anyone from the Board of Education, I understand even a work session is a public meeting, anybody can come to it if it wants to, but if you need any more information on this board or any people here, you just get hold of Terry, and she'll be glad to help any way she can.
Okay. Thank you. Item number eleven, a discussion on setting the twenty-twelve qualifying fee for candidates running for county offices. Fees are as follows. Pierce County twenty-twelve qualifying fees. Partisan is clerk of court, one thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. County Commissioner District One is a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. County Commissioner District Three is a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. County Coroner is twenty, is seventy-two dollars. County Surveyor is fifteen dollars. The Sheriff is one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents. The Tax Commissioner is one thousand three hundred and ninety-two twenty-five. Anybody have any?
Sounds like they were last year on the chair.
Ms. Lynn and them went over it the other day.
Heard the sounds they were last time around, weren't you, Ms. Lynn?
A little higher.
The Board of Education's, I think, in a, on a nonpartisan. I think maybe else is the same.
We ain't got there yet. I hear a motion to we set these fees. I make a motion. Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor by signifying aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right, the nonpartisan is probate judge is one thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. The magistrate judge is one thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Board of Education District One is a hundred and twenty-six dollars. Board of Education District Three is a hundred and twenty-six. Is any discussion? Do I hear a motion? I make a motion to accept this. Have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor by signifying aye? The ayes have it. So the opening date for qualifying of candidate in the general primary nonpartisan special election is nine AM on May the twenty-third, twenty-twelve, and the closing date, now look at these dates, it's twelve noon on May the twenty-fifth. You don't have the two and a half days to qualify. So don't go a week.
When is, when is the qualifying time for the partisan races?
Same time.
Same time. You only got two and a half days.
They just don't say that.
They went back and changed the law and made everybody qualify at the same time.
Huh. So where, it used to be in April, they shoved it on to May now.
Right, but see, the nonpartisan is qualifying June, so that was all politics, people trying to get advantage over somebody else. It's one of those line of games that...
So the general primary means partisan. Know what that means?
Yes, sir.
Line, they just say partisan. Keep it simple.
Item number twelve is the MPC and the NFC and the Library Project consider approving the multi-purpose facility in the neighborhood facility center library invoices. The total invoices are a hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. The NFC and the multi-purpose building is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. The library grant is thirty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, and the library's the county portion, two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one oh-four, and that's a total of a hundred and seventy-five, forty-six, ninety-five. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay the invoices for the project.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor by signifying aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. If there's nothing else for this meeting, this meeting is adjourned.